Okay, gentlemen, Supervisor Shandley and Supervisor Shepard, this is Chairman Dr. Joe Shirley Jr. I'm sorry I'm not there, I have some things that come up and I'm not gonna, I'm not there, so. Otherwise, um, let's go ahead and, um, take care of business this morning. Um, I want to welcome everybody, all of the people that are there, the leadership that is there, I want to welcome. So, uh, like we usually do, uh, Mr. Wingard, um, I assume you have someone to lead us in the pledge and someone to, uh, give a prayer this morning?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, we've asked Ben Dougdale to give the pledge and the prayer will be given by Devin Brown.
Okay, let's go ahead and have the pledge and the prayer, Mr. Wingard.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father in heaven, grateful we could be here and pray that we might have the blessings of heaven to give us wisdom, bless the elected leaders that they can make decisions that will help our county into the future. And we say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Okay, uh, thank you for the pledge and, uh, for the prayer, gentlemen. So with that, gentlemen, uh, let's go ahead and, um, call the Board of Supervisors meeting to order at this time. We do have several items on the agenda to, to take care of. Without further ado, Mr. Wingard, item number one?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, number one is the consent, consent agenda. We have items A and B and we would request approval.
Okay, gentlemen, what are your wishes?
Second.
The motion and a second to go with a particular item as presented, are there any questions or discussion? And hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, it's unanimous that we go ahead and do that. Okay, so, um, item number, uh, two, um, Mr. Wingard?
Yes, number two, Mr. Chairman, is discussion impossible, appointment of Dr. Joe Shirley Jr., Jr. to serve as the Apache County representative on the Northern Arizona Council of Governments NACOG Board. This is something we do every year and, uh, we would recommend that, uh, that the chairman serve in this capacity.
I make a motion.
Second. The motion and a second to go with a particular item as presented, gentlemen, uh, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Aye, it's unanimous that we go ahead and do that, uh, I appreciate that, gentlemen, and certainly I'll, to the best of my ability, represent the board as well as the government and our people on, uh, NACOG, the Northern Arizona Council of Governments. I know there are a lot of important issues there that they discuss and act upon and I do my best to, uh, represent us, thank you. Okay, gentlemen, um, let's go ahead and move on. Item number, um, three, Mr. Wingard?
Yes, item number three is discussion impossible approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Apache County, the town of Eager, the town of Springerville, and the city of St. Johns for the construction of the Crooked Nail Public Trail. Uh, for your information, this is a project that's been worked on for the last six, eight months where a grant was obtained to do a study of the possibility of building a trail from the Round Valley area to St. Johns. Now we have this, uh, actual, uh, grant for the construction of the trail. We're still working on the location of the trail to finalize that. There is a committee that meets on a regular basis on this. Once the, the trail is, is specifically set to where it's gonna be, we'll bring that back to the board to show you a map so you can see where it's gonna be. But, uh, anyway, this, this IGA is the next step in the process to, uh, to actually construct a trail and we would recommend approval.
Okay, uh, gentlemen? I motion.
I'll make a second.
Okay, a motion and a second to, uh, go with a particular item as, uh, as presented, um, um, is there any discussion, questions?
I have a couple items, Chairman.
Okay, uh, Mr. Shandley?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Wingard, I believe that we have our staff, uh, attending meetings already and I think they actually have some work in the field to possibly do for some deliverables. Uh, we're gonna keep track of our hours, right?
That is correct.
For that match?
Yes, that is correct. We have a $30,000 match that can be done with lots of different, uh, ways, but the count, the time that would, that our, uh, members of the county, we have two individuals that attend those meetings, the time that they spend on it thus far, plus the time they'll put in in, uh, finalizing the location of the trail, will go toward the match.
And then, is there a possibility, the next time this comes up, just for the sake of the public, we could show the maps? I don't know, do we have that ability?
We do have that ability. We can, uh, either put it on the screen here or, or set up a, 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 a display. Once we get that finalized as to where the actual route will be, we'll bring that back to the, to the board.
All right, thank you, thank you, Chairman.
Okay, um, when you get that done, uh, when you get the trail done, Mr. Wingard, uh, let me know. I'm gonna walk that trail and see what it looks like.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman.
And then, uh, certainly I think, um, Supervisor Shepard will probably agree with me, we need some trails up here too that, that needs working on, um, that's just FYI. Okay, uh, gentlemen, uh, with that, uh, if there are no other questions or discussion, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. 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 Okay, uh, opposing, nay? Did I hear a, uh, a, you hear a name, Mr. Shandley?
Yes. Yes, you did.
Oh, so it's unanimous?
Yep.
Yes, Chairman.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I, okay, with that, um, the item does pass, it's in, it's unanimous vote. Item number four, I take it is just a notification, um, assessor there?
Yes, good morning.
Mr. Chairman, we have Steve Jensen, the, the chief deputy for the assessor's office, here to, uh, address the board.
Okay, Mr. Jensen, you have the floor.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The assessor's office is here today to notify the board that, and the public, that the annual notices of value will go out February 28th of 2017. This will include approximately 250 additional notices, um, being sent to native and non-native American property owners in and around the Navajo Nation. The assessor has until March 1st of 2018 to complete the audit and remove the property from the tax exempt program for 2018. Until such, such time the audit is complete, the property, the primary, uh, excuse me, the tax exempt program 2018, until such time the audit is complete, the property will remain tax exempt for 2017. The properties being audited are primarily used for residential and commercial use on fee simple land. By notifying the property owners of the value of the property for the 2018 tax year and giving them the rights of appeal, the assessor has laid the foundation to audit the tax exempt program and remove, if warranted, the, the, the properties for 2018. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, gentlemen, do you, do you have any questions or any discussions on this notification?
Chairman, I'd make a motion, this is Shandley, uh, but I have some questions.
Um, I don't know if we need to, uh, take any action on this, uh, Mr. Wingard?
Mr. Chairman, no motion would be needed on this because it is notification. I do, I do believe that we can discuss it, though.
Okay, uh, Mr. Shandley, it's just a notification to, to us and to the public, I guess, and so, but we can go ahead and talk about it, Mr. Shandley?
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Jensen, how, how did you get to this point, uh, this is obviously a change?
We've been working through lots of different audit programs, auditing every program that we have, senior value freeze, organizations, churches. This has just come now to a point in time where we can put it on the 2018 notice of values. Um, this has started about two years ago with auditing all programs that are tax exempt, even agricultural, organizations, nonprofits, so on.
Did, have the bulk of these, uh, these approximately 250 are new then, notices as far as taxation purposes?
Yes, it would be.
Okay.
And they are just notices, they are not...
Yeah, they can appeal them.
They can appeal them, that doesn't, um, again, they're just notices of value.
Are they, um, is there a distribution throughout the county or is it predominantly in a given area?
No, it's distributed throughout the county.
Okay. And non-native, that might be business owners?
Business owners.
That are within the boundaries of the Navajo Nation?
Yes.
On fee simple?
Yes. Anything that we found that was on fee simple land that, that had sold in the last couple of years, just kind of brought forth a lot of questions to us and so.
Okay.
This was a first step as to try to figure out how to deal with these, with these properties and verify ownership records and go through that process.
All right, thank you, thank you, Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Shandley, uh, I don't know if there's anyone else wanting to ask questions or discuss?
It does not appear so, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, given that, let's go ahead and move on, gentlemen. Okay, uh, item number, uh, five, uh, County Attorney, Mr. Whiting?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Um, items number five and number six are both from the County Attorney's Office and those are both gonna be tabled, Mr. Chairman, so we can move on to item seven if that's okay with the board.
Okay, gentlemen, uh, if it's okay, uh, shall we entertain a motion to table?
I make a motion, we table item number six and item, wait, five and item number six both at the request of, uh, County Attorney Michael Whiting.
Okay. Okay, motion and a second to table, uh, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye, it's unanimous that we go ahead and do that, Mr. Whiting? Okay, item number seven, uh, Mr. Crosby?
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Um, I bring before you today a discussion and possible approval to lease three motor graders, uh, for District Two. The lease amount for each motor grader will be $28,318.08 for a total of $84,494.24 a year and this lease will be for the period of seven years. Uh, this, this agreement is through our National Intergovernmental Purchasing Association contract and we would recommend approval.
Gentlemen?
Motion.
Your motion to approve, is there a second?
I make a second.
Yeah, motion and a second to approve a particular item as presented, gentlemen, is there any questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, we do have a gentleman in the audience that's raising his hand, would like to address the board.
Okay, go ahead and have the gentleman come forward. Come to the microphone, uh, state your name.
I'm Brad Peterson, I'm just a simple minded well digger here in St. Johns, but I did a little math here and $28,318.08 times three does not equal 84,494.24. It equals 84,954.72 and this is both on seven and eight. Like I say, it's, I'm just a simple minded feller, but my calculator comes up with them figures.
You know, I did.
And I thought the county ought to have somebody with a little more common sense than I do that could add up numbers, but maybe they don't.
Maybe.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Mr. Crosby?
He might be right, Supervisor, uh, let me double check. Yeah, eighty, so there's a typo in there, Supervisor, it's, uh, 84,954,024, so, good catch, Mr. Peterson.
Okay, um...
How many, excuse me, one more time, but how many of these mathematical typos does this county do every month without some simple feller like me looking it over? Thank you.
Second, Mr. Peterson, uh, okay, gentlemen, um, I think, um, what we could probably do is amend by motion, uh, the figures, uh, but we need to make sure that they're, they're correct figures, uh, Mr. Crosby?
Yes, sir. And, and that is correct, Supervisor, 84,954,24 is per year.
That's for both items number seven and eight.
That'll be for both items and seven, eight, we haven't done number eight, but yes, it is the same for both items.
Okay, uh, I forget, Mr. Shepard, is, do you want to withdraw your motion so we can go ahead and take care of, um, well, let's go ahead and amend the motion. You know, maybe we can address it that way, Mr. Whiting, is that okay?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that is okay, you can just amend the motion to the correct figure.
Okay, um, Mr. Shepard, I believe you have the motion, um, you're gonna go ahead and, uh, amend your motion, uh, and put in there, uh, the correct figures, uh, as shared with us by, uh, Mr. Crosby?
Yes, as you so meant.
Okay, motion and, uh, Mr. Shandley, are you, you okay with that?
Yeah, I, I still second it with that updated figure, 84,954,24.
Okay, uh, gentlemen, uh, the motion has been amended to, uh, reflect the correct figures, you know, relative to, uh, the total cost per year, uh, on these heavy equipment. Um, okay, with that, are there any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye, it's unanimous that we go ahead and do that. Okay, item number, uh, eight, uh, it's, it's the same particular item only as with District Three, uh, I think the thing, the figures are the same, gentlemen, what are your wishes?
Motion.
I'll second.
Yeah, motion and a second, uh, to, uh, go ahead and go with a particular item, uh, as amended, uh, the figures are amended, uh, to reflect, uh, the new figures put forward by, um, Mr. Crosby. Any discussion, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye, it's unanimous that we go ahead and do that. Okay, thank you, gentlemen, on that. Okay, Mr. Crosby, item number nine?
Similar to the other two items, Supervisors, item number nine is request approval, uh, well, no, it's not, this is a different one. Request approval to award bid 201702 and this is for blasting at the limestone pit and we rec, we had a one bidder only on this bid. Uh, the contractor was Arizona Drilling and Blasting and his bid was three hundred, three dollars and twenty-six, uh, three dollars and twenty-six cents per cubic yard. The bid spec was for 100,000 yards, so the extended cost would be $326,000. Uh, we would recommend approval.
Motion here?
A motion to approve, is there a second?
I second, I have a couple questions, Chairman.
Okay, motion and a second to approve a particular item, uh, Mr. Shandley, question?
Yes, sir, thank you. Uh, Chairman, what is this, um, the purpose of this blasting is for what and what, how will it ultimately, do you think, be paid and, um, where is this material used predominantly?
Thank you, Supervisor. Uh, this, our limestone quarry, um, the material out there is such that we can only do about the top 10 feet with a, with a dozer. Um, there's a pretty significant shelf of limestone, uh, below that. The only way that we've been able to excavate that out is through blasting. So this contract, or the purpose of this contract is to hire a contractor to come in and drill and blast, um, a section of the pit which will break up the rock, allow us to get in there and, um, pull it out so we can run it through the crusher. The, um, the material, your second question was on how we would pay for it. Presently, we'll pay for this out of the District Three HERF funds. Um, we are anticipating the approval of an IGA with Navajo Nation DOT for the Aspen Loop, pending their getting some approvals for some clearances. Um, we anticipate the revenue from that IGA will pay for this blasting. I, the third part of your question was the primary use of the material. Um, over the last few years, we've, we've tracked who, um, uses material out of the pit. Uh, District Three primarily uses material out of the pit to the tune of about 32, 33,000 yards of material or tons of material per year. Uh, District Two, about 88,000 tons per year and District One, anywhere from 500 to 1,500 tons per year. I should also mention that we do, um, sell some material to the Salt River Project. Uh, last year they purchased nearly, uh, 25,000 tons and those revenues come, come back into that pit to defer any costs there, to supplement those costs of our operation there, so I hope that answers your question.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Shandley, are there any other questions or, you know, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye, it's unanimous that we go ahead and do that, then. Okay, item number 10, Mr. Crosby?
This is what I was thinking of, it's similar to the other item seven and eight. This is a discussion of possible approval to, to lease one new wheel loader for the limestone pit. Um, the yearly cost on this lease is 31,0968.19. Uh, this also is through an agreement with our National IPA Contract and we would recommend approval.
Gentlemen? Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve a particular item as presented, gentlemen, are there any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye, it's unanimous that we go ahead and do that. Okay, we're done, now item number 11, gentlemen, um, the, is there someone there, Mr. Wingard, to represent the information technology to, uh, do the presentation?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have Ben Dougdale here.
Mr. Dougdale, uh, item number 11?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Item number 11 is from the Information Technology Department. It is the discussion and possible approval of an enterprise agreement with Microsoft to update the server and desktop software for Apache County utilizing state purchasing at a cost not to exceed 149,544.05 annually for the next three years. I have included, uh, in your backup, uh, some of the key points, uh, that we need to address with this, uh, but to summarize, Apache County has the need to update our systems and this, uh, represents a significant savings over the alternative.
Okay, gentlemen, there you have it, what are your wishes?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to have questions.
Your motion to approve a particular item, is there a second?
I second, I have questions as well.
Okay, uh, motion and a second to approve a particular item, uh, as presented, uh, Mr. Shepard, uh, questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Quick question, I guess, uh, maybe in, in future references as we receive these tender backup items, under, uh, the review item form, if, uh, we can indicate where the funding will be coming from, what funding source, District One, Two, Three, or County, that's one. The other is, uh, uh, the expression of, um, savings, uh, what are we looking at? How much are we trying to save here compared to, to not requested and current, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, uh, Mr. Dougdale, uh, maybe you can answer those questions first, uh, I don't know if Mr. Shepard has any more questions, but otherwise, and then we'll have, we'll ask questions, Mr. Shandley will ask questions after that. Mr. Dougdale?
I'd love to, thank you, Mr. Shirley, Dr. Shirley. Uh, so, uh, to cover the first question, uh, this was budgeted in fiscal year 2017 and will be coming from IT capital improvements as budgeted and... I'm sorry, Mr. Shepard, what was the second question?
Savings, what will be the savings?
Yes, I'm sorry, the, the cost savings. Yes, I have a, a quote here for, uh, for updating our systems in a similar manner, but without, uh, using this purchasing vehicle and that quote is just over $620,000 and would be due, uh, on the year that we entered into that agreement as opposed to spread over three years.
Okay, did you have any other questions, Mr. Shepard?
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, uh, Supervisor Shandley, questions?
Actually, I was gonna ask about the savings issue, Chairman, so I'm good, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions or discussion on this particular item? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye, it's unanimous that we go ahead and do that, thank you, Mr. Dougdale?
Thank you.
Okay, we're done, the last, uh, couple of items, um, Ms. Delaney, um, this is your next item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, my name is Cindy Delancy and I am with the University of Arizona. Um, I noticed, uh, Mr. Chairman, on item 12 on your agenda, it reflects ASU, so I just wanted to highlight perhaps, uh, for your consideration and the board's consideration about, uh, when appropriate correcting, um, the agenda for the record. So, uh, with that, I very much appreciate the opportunity to appear before you, Mr. Chairman and members of the, of the board. It was very kind for Supervisor Shandley to extend this invitation to me and, uh, before I launch into my presentation, um, I just wanted to recognize, um, my colleagues that are here with me today from Cooperative Extension, uh, they are my partners in the community and, uh, Ms. Joyce Alvez and Mr. Michael Hauser are here with me in the room today and, uh, just wanted to highlight their attendance and, uh, before I begin. So, uh, with that, uh, Mr. Chairman, I am, uh, ready to proceed, uh, at your direction.
Okay, uh, I'm sorry for not pronouncing your name right, uh, Ms. Delancy, but otherwise, uh, for no objections, uh, gentlemen, uh, we'll go ahead and have, um, Ms. Delancy, um, do the presentation. Okay, hearing none, uh, Ms. Delancy, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, uh, again, am the Executive Director of the Natural Resource Users Law and Policy Center, which is a new, uh, program at the University of Arizona and so I just, uh, brought with me a couple slides today to kind of walk through, uh, for the board and, uh, starting out, are you able to see these slides, Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Shepard?
Yes. No, I, this is the chairman, no, I, no, I'm not, I, I can't see, but, but that's all right, uh, you can share the, uh, the written material with me later or just drop it out there and that one, that one, our county manager can, uh, share it with me.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just, again, wanted to make sure I was clear as I, uh, moved through the materials, um, with, with, uh, you know, the time that I have. So, the Natural Resource Users Law and Policy Center is a, first of its kind, uh, program in, in the country that is a partnership between the University of Arizona College of Life Sciences, specifically Cooperative Extension, and the James E. Rogers College of Law. I am a lawyer, um, I'll talk a little bit about my, um, background and expertise that I bring to the position here in a little bit, but, um, I'm the inaugural director that's working on building this program with the purpose of meeting the current un, unmet science, legal, and policy needs of Arizona's natural resource users and policymaker community. And, and really what's unique about having this partnership between the College of Agriculture, specifically Cooperative Extension, uh, and the College of Law is that, um, the, uh, ability to pair up science, technology, engineering, and math through the College of Agriculture and Life Sciences Cooperative Extension with law firm improved, improved legal education research service and, and really creating that unbiased source of information for public. for policymakers. So, the, the purpose of the Natural Resource Users Law and Policy Center is to, number one, serve the natural resource users community with legal and policy assistance; number two, train the next generation of natural resource professionals, whether they be lawyers or non-lawyers. These are the folks that are going to be sitting in these, um, very important policy, uh, seats at very, at a variety of different level. The folks that leave the law school are our next generation of, obviously, attorneys, but in addition to that are county supervisors, um, town council mayors, uh, legislative officials, and potentially congressional members, you know, and to have that rich understanding of perspectives, uh, brought forth from the natural resource users community, and to have that exposure of, of that science coupled with the law is just going to serve, you know, help develop better policy being made all, all along, whether someone is in the, goes into the field of law or not. And then number three is providing a resource for current policymakers. So, you know, what I mean by that is if there is perhaps, you know, a, a body, or, you know, of, of elected officials that want to receive some additional training, or have some materials on various different topics, natural resource-related, the, hopefully the Natural Resource Users Law and Policy Center would be able to essentially give that, that deep dive, that overview, um, on a very, uh, you know, very specific level as far as the resource questions at hand. So, how will we be doing this? You know, what, what will this program look like? How will the purpose of the program be met? The cornerstone of the program, in, in my view, and, and the vision of the, of the, of the initiative, is to create a, a legal clinic staffed by graduate students of the College of Agriculture and Life Sciences, working side-by-side with second and third year law students. So, you know, to have that ability, to have students that come from that deep, um, life experience of natural resource use and, and science that usually you find over in the College of Agriculture and Life Science, coupled that with the expertise of law students, really will be able to touch on something very special. And in addition to having the clinic staffed by the students, it's my hope to, one day, create, uh, the capacity to have, um, additional legal fellows, meaning that these are new lawyers that, uh, will have some time and ability to, to, uh, develop their practice in a supervised clinical environment, so when they are ready to go on to private practice, that they have that expertise coming from their experiences at the University of Arizona. So, um, in addition to that, you know, I'd like to develop, uh, a curriculum focused on some undergraduate courses with the introduction to agriculture students and, and at the College of Life Sciences, you know, to have that broad view of agriculture and natural resource law and policy, and that connectivity of science, technology, engineering, and math stem as far as how the interface of, of those, uh, two categories working together. So, I've, I've currently submitted a, a curriculum for students that would be available for the spring of twenty eighteen, giving, uh, students in undergraduate capacity at the College of Agriculture and Life Science, uh, coupled with, uh, cross-designation from the College of Law undergraduate program, that introduction and connectivity with these types of topics and issues. And in addition, creating some programming at the College of Law to, you know, have a little bit more of hands-on focus from the natural resource industries and communities. So, going back to my initial statement, as far as what will the law clinic do, um, the, the clinic, in my, um, estimation, will offer low or no-cost legal services to the public, or, you know, to be able to be a resource for groups that otherwise can't, um, otherwise access legal assistance in the natural resource users community, um, will be participating in legal matters, uh, from a natural resource users perspective. And in addition to having that, uh, client and case advocacy, there'd be some an, analysis of public policy and the impacts to the natural resource community through the eyes of the natural resource user. And, and I also envision the center and the clinic being a source of research and expertise on new and emerging areas of law, as well as identifying policy gaps. So, again, you know, additional items for the clinic would be conducting trainings and outreach, um, on the natural resource community, you know, topics of interest, hosting speakers and conferences of relevant topics, to be able to information-share and learn, um, increasing public awareness about the contribution that the natural resource users community makes to local, state, regional, and the national economy. You know, I love coming to, uh, Apache County, this is my second trip up here, and, you know, as I travel th, down your, your highways, it's just, again, be apparent, you know, the immense contribution that the natural resource community makes to, um, rural communities. This is the lifeblood of, of many rural economies, and to be able to have this deep expertise, and to be able to prepare that next generation of natural resource professionals in any capacity is extremely important. In addition to increasing public awareness about that economic contribution, it'd be to analyze and study proposed legislation and expose students to legislative process at the state, local, and national levels. It's important that we provide that path to students to observe how their government works, and so they have a, a clear understanding of the process and how to engage. So, how my program, you know, and, you know, the center in my mind, you know, the program that I'm working on building, and how I envision this kind of working, and I, I got some really good feedback last night from members of your community, you know, this is my initial starting point, um, is going to, uh, have essentially a law tract and a policy tract, and how it will be overseen, uh, is by industry experts, you know, that holistic, uh, view from the natural resource users community, focusing on Arizona's five Cs with a little bit of a modern facelift. And what I mean by that is, you know, the copper community, in my mind, you know, that box clearly encompasses more than just mining copper, you know, we have sand and gravel, aggregate, uranium being mined. Um, the mining community in Arizona is far, far, uh, reaching beyond, you know, just limited to copper, so I see the, the natural resource users that fall under that general mining category falling in there. In addition to the cattle box, you know, the, the beef, uh, producers and the dairymen, uh, as well as, you know, the, the sheep, uh, ranchers, you know, falling under that, that cattle kind of livestock box. The cotton folks, um, have some unique, uh, issues as they, uh, continue to grow and produce cotton. And then really, the citrus box, in my mind, would encompass the, uh, production agriculture specialty crops. Um, we have tremendous amount of vegetables being grown in Arizona, and the immense contribution being made by our growers to feeding our country, you know, as, as I was learning the other day when I was in Yuma, there's a lettuce truck leaving every ninety seconds full of lettuce leaving from Yuma for other parts of the country. So, I really see that citrus box, including the folks that are growing, uh, vegetables, specialty crops, dates, pistachios, pecans, and then the climate box envisioning our timber industry, our water economy, um, you know, and just really focusing on that water and air component, and so to, again, include that, that, the, the forest community and, and timber economy is really where I would see, uh, them falling into, as far as that, that governance structure of Arizona's five Cs, sort of starting as the backbone of how the, um, center will be managed, as far as, uh, what, how direction will be taken, resources to be allocated, and, uh, cases and, and matters that me and the students will be allocating our time and resources to working on. So, what are some of the benefits of doing this? You know, we, we, I want to build a program for the natural resource community that's of benefit, and so some of those benefits are, you know, meeting a need. There's tremendous need, I hear from stakeholders as I travel all across the state, I've, uh, been running the wheels off my pickup, going around and, and kind of making sure that I have my finger on the pulse of what's on folks' minds, and, and, you know, there is that need, and, and this center would be able, specifically through the clinic, to be able to be that first step of legal representation for clients engaged or interested in natural resource-related industries within Arizona and the West. And, again, but give the students active hands-on learning, to learn while due is incredibly important in the learning process, particularly as, as, um, you know, new lawyers and the area of natural resource practice becomes even more complex, to be able to train, uh, students in this area of law and give them the opportunity to work on real-life cases for real-life clients is tremendous benefit, the entire natural resource community, to have, uh, students who are well-versed and to have that opportunity, like, working in a supervised environment at the University of Arizona. And then, as I mentioned, preparing for the future, you know, being able to expose, uh, you know, that next generation of some of the topics that they might be called upon to, to problem-solve, so we all benefit by having, uh, prepared and, and ready leaders for the future. So, the organizational structure of the center, um, will be governed by that Advisory Council, as I mentioned earlier, that will be made up of industry experts, um, all having a, a co-equal voice and working as thought partners in, um, the topics and subject matters that the clinic and the center will be working on. No one will have a louder voice than any other, and I thought that it was very important to have that type of governance. Um, I will be working closely with the, uh, Advisory Council. Currently, I report to Dr. Jeff Silvertooth, uh, who is the head of Cooperative Extension in the College of Agriculture and Life Sciences, as well as the dean of the College of Law, Mark Miller. Um, there will be a clinical director that will be housed in Tucson with the students on campus, to be there daily to, um, work on, you know, all the nuts and bolts of, of essentially running a law office, and that person will be working very closely with myself. And so, how all, how is this all going to come together? You know, what's the funding mechanism here? This is a public-private partnership with a three-year sunset clause, so if it doesn't work out, you know, there is a, an uncertain here. Um, my hope is that we'll be wildly successful. Um, the University of Arizona has stepped forward and, and, uh, you know, will be sharing, uh, funding from my position for the next three years. Anything else will be, um, coming again from that public-private partnership with reliance on the public sector. So, how did we get here? You know, why did this occur? And, and what was the steps? And really, this, uh, this whole concept came out of, uh, listening to the natural resource users that approached the University of Arizona and really identified the need and developed this concept, and having University of Arizona be your land-grant university in Arizona, there is, uh, you know, real connectivity and feeling that, that this aligned very much with the mission and purpose of, of, uh, the land-grant, uh, university here, as well as, um, then the, the, uh, folks that were involved in these conceptual conversations conducted a nationwide search. Um, industry was, uh, was key to that search, they were an integral part of, of my selection, and I was hired in September, uh, twenty sixteen. So, a little bit about myself, you know, again, I started my career with the University of Arizona in twenty sixteen. Uh, before joining the U of A, I, um, served as the Director of Government Public Affairs for, uh, BP in Wyoming. Um, I also had the privilege of, uh, serving as the Executive Director for the Wyoming County Commissioners Association, so local government is, is near and dear to my heart, you know, I very much understand, uh, that local government is where the rubber hits the road. And, uh, you know, I also had the privilege of serving as an elected, uh, county and prosecuting attorney, as well as a special, uh, Assistant United States Attorney, so I graduated the University of Wyoming College of Law, and I live in Maricopa, and that's where my office is, at the Maricopa Ag Center. So, just jumping forward and giving you a little bit of context and perspective as far as the timeframe of when all this is gonna hopefully come together, and, and, and my hope and intention is that, uh, the Advisory Council, you know, I'm on track as far as my timeframe, the center was established in September, that Advisory Council that I mentioned, uh, is well underway as far as being, um, put together and, and formed. Um, I'm, I've got the undergraduate course curriculum already in the hopper for twenty eighteen, hopefully students will be able to enroll, and, uh, hopefully we'll be able to start a clinical director search, uh, and have the clinic ready for students, uh, in twenty eighteen. So, we have a little bit of availability and capacity, if there was some kind of project that, that could come, and that the Advisory Council and Task Force that I'm working with felt that, uh, would be right for the center to start working on now, so I encourage you to, you know, if you have ideas or, or thoughts, please get in touch with me. So, this is where you can find me, my email, my website, my phone number, um, is on here, and again, I, I really appreciate your time and attention, and thank you for the opportunity to present to you today.
Okay, thank you, uh, gentlemen, do you have any questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Len, Delancy, uh, do, uh, keep us informed, uh, certainly, I like to believe, uh, you know, we as supervisors can, uh, you're there, you know, to, to help us, you know, as well as, uh, our government and our people, so thank you very much. Okay, with that, Mr. Winger, uh, is there anybody, uh, there on item number thirteen?
We have one individual has submitted a form, George Walsh, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I haven't come forward.
Good morning and thank you, George Walsh, we're in Arizona. My concern this morning is that I sent a letter or an email to the Apache County Clerk of the Board Manager dated December twenty-eighth, asking that he informed the Apache County Board of Supervisors about an open meeting violation complaint filed with the Arizona Attorney General's Office of Omelet. To this point, I have not seen that brought before the board to ask what the board wants to do and how to handle this complaint. I know that the Omelet Attorney has contacted me by phone and by two letters, so I would assume by now the county has been notified of this complaint, and since this is a Board of Supervisors open meeting violation, you would think that the Board of Supervisors would be made publicly aware so that they could make a decision on how to move forward with this. Instead, I believe it's being handled behind closed doors with the county attorney's office and the county manager clerk of the board's office. On another item, I wish to bring forth the recent story in Navajo Times related to the use of the county facilities for non-approved dances, banquets, and other items. I would like to know why it is that not one public official asked to be interviewed by the reporter, did not stand up to say this was legal and everything was all right, and the money's accounted for. I would ask that the two supervisors not involved in any of this, the two new supervisors, place each of these items on the next agenda, one to discuss the open meeting violation, and one to discuss the use of county resources for personal profit by the District One Supervisor. I'm asking this because you as the supervisors have the fiduciary responsibility to make sure that everything in this county is done legally and above board. Thank you very much.
Okay, gentlemen, that's the gamut of our agenda, um, if there's nothing else, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion?
A motion and a second to adjourn, uh, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. With that, gentlemen, uh, thank you for, uh, for being there for, for us and for the people, for the government, uh, the meeting is hereby adjourned.